One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. Nine present. Citizens comments please.
Congratulations to the Southmoreland School Board. You made the editorial page of the Tribune Review and gave our school district a hideous black eye. Let me read to you the editor's statement. I'm sure you've all seen it, but let me refresh your memory. August 4th, 2015. School Days, D-A-Z-E. Under a new five-year contract, Southmoreland School District administrators, including principals, will see their health insurance contributions reduced. Never mind the message this sends to other district employees and how this will affect negotiations with other unions. As perks go, this one is beyond justification. I'm sure you're asking, why does she care? What's it to her? Well, aside from the fact that she and all other district and state residents are paying for this, it is abhorrent to me that other employees are being treated differently by the school board. Only Mr. Alt voted against discriminatory fiscal employee abuse. I had heard rumors that our lowest-paid employees were being charged huge amounts for health care, so I decided to find out for myself. I personally interviewed an employee earning $30,000 a year and was horrified to learn that the employee was paying $750 a month, $9,000 a year for health care, or 30 percent of that employee's annual income. Compare that to the administrators who earn hundreds of thousands of dollars each year, who will now pay 8 percent for their health insurance. A $30,000 employee pays nearly 400 percent more for health care than our multimillion-dollar administrative staff members. In order for our lowest-paid employees to survive, they may be forced to resort to some low-level Obamacare plan in order to be able to put food on the table. How could this board, in good conscience, vote for that contract? I am not suggesting equal salary, but I find it reprehensible that we are using health care co-payments from our hard-working, lowest-paid employees to directly subsidize minimal insurance contributions from our highest-paid employees. Mr. Alt, thank you for standing up for the exploited employees at Southmoreland School District. It's important to me that the students, taxpayers, and voters of Southmoreland be made aware of how this board, with the exception of Mr. Alt, has sunk to the level of economically exploiting our lowest-paid employees to enhance the wealth of the richest people who work here. This is one more disgrace to the school district that some of us are fighting so hard to protect and to thrive. When will this school board realize that denial is not just a river in Egypt?
Minutes? Thank you, Dr. Feike.
I just want to make one comment. I do agree with Dr. Feike, and I believe that it's also a slap. Excuse me. Slap in the face of the taxpayers, who also are out there suffering and can't afford to pay their health care. That's all.
Minutes? It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the July 9th and July 30th, 2015 meetings. Motion please. Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Business and finance fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the July 2015 Treasurers Report and the July 2015 Bills Payable.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mrs. Love. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Authorization of payment to Department of Environmental Resources?
It's recommended that the board approve a resolution which will be attached to the minutes authorizing payment to the Department of Environmental Resources in the amount of $2,200.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions?
Yeah. What exactly did we do and why did it happen?
There were discharges from the sewage plant, and it happened because, as near as we can tell, the individuals who were operating the plant before Mr. Mizwa took over left the plant in disrepair. And there were things that were not functioning properly, and consequently, there was suspended solids, bacteria, ammonia, things of that nature going into the stream that should not have been. Those were not picked up on the samples until such time as we started running the plant on our own, and then those items began to be picked up on samples. So Mr. Mizwa took it upon himself when he was working at the plant, he had the DEP committee, he had Chester Engineering Committee, there was a broken ultraviolet light, there were pumps that weren't working, there were filters that weren't working, those have all been repaired. And in the last nine months, we have not had any situations where there were things going into the waters that should not have been.
When did this occur?
I can give you the dates.
Just the year.
2013 and 2014.
Those employees that left it in disrepair, are any of those employees still here?
They were not employees.
Oh, they were outside contractors.
And they are not here.
And we paid them?
We did.
And are we taking any action against them?
We've been attempting to do that, yes, and have not been successful to date.
What actions are we taking?
Well, we did withhold payment from them for a period of time.
So we do have some of their money?
We did. We do not any longer.
So we paid them and we had no recourse?
Yes, we did.
Are we taking any legal action, Dave?
I haven't been asked to do that currently. I was aware of the situation a while ago, that the problem appeared to be that we don't have a way of proving whether the samples that had been submitted in the past were not true samples, and that's the dilemma.
What else would they be though? If the blue lights weren't working and things weren't working, but they were getting samples in that were getting approved, how else could they have approved?
From some other source which didn't have a problem.
But again, we don't have any conclusive proof to that matter.
So given the fact that the fine as a maximum could be $10,000 per day, I think that Selman has a reasonable sum to go.
I just have one more question. Since we hired a contractor, who was supposed to be overseeing that in our administration?
I don't know who would have the expertise to do it.
We had no one here with the expertise to oversee that. That's why we had a contractor doing it.
Anyone else with questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine, zero. School Solicitors Workshop?
It's recommended that the board approve a resolution authorizing the solicitor to attend the School Solicitors Workshop in Hershey in October 2015.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions?
Yeah, how much is that going to cost?
I handed out the paperwork at the last meeting. It's the registration fee, $290, early registration fee plus room at the lodge rate and travel.
Would be the approximate total?
Probably about $400 to $500.
Okay. Any more questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight to one. Seeing their old business, new business, policy 706.1.
It's recommended that the board approve policy 706.1, disposal of surplus property, textbooks, and supplies. This policy was posted for 30 days. Most of these items would be disposed of because they're either obsolete or unusable.
Any questions? Roll call. Sorry, motion please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. St. Vincent Prevention Projects.
It's recommended that the board approve a contribution of $1,020 to the St. Vincent Prevention Project. Matching funds are also provided by the Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol Commission.
Need a motion please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions?
Yeah, what does each one of those two, I know we're not on to number three yet, but what distinguishes the two and what do they do for us?
St. Vincent Prevention Projects does, at the elementary school, they do Project Reel. That deals with substance abuse and bullying, for the most part. At the secondary levels, they do substance abuse, bullying, and we also have a crisis counselor who deals with students who are at risk of any number of things, academic and emotional. And the distinguished, one is just a matching contribution, and the other is the fee for their services.
Any more questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
I think this money for both of them could be better used in Haas for the same purpose. No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight to one. St. Vincent Prevention Projects.
It's recommended that the board approve entering into a service agreement with St. Vincent Prevention Projects to provide realistic education about life programming to our elementary students that are costing $6,825, and that would be for 21 days and 56 days of project success, including the intervention specialist for the secondary level at a cost of $19,600, totaling $26,425.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight to one. We need a motion to recess, to executive session for personnel and...
I have a mitigation matter for Scottsdale Housing Tax Assessment Appeal and Sears Kmart tax math number 471400154, number 111242006.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Second by Mrs. Love. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Personnel resignation, middle school math teacher.
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Katie Price, middle school mathematics teacher.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Resignation, middle school girls soccer coach.
It's recommended the board accept with regrets the resignation of Kaylee Cummins as middle school girls soccer coach effective immediately.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Question? Roll call please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Approval of the following coaches and volunteers?
It's recommended that the board approve the following, the board approved the following recommendations for the 2015-2016 school year. Salaries are in accordance with the Southmoreland Athletic Supplemental salaries. Ed Jenkins and Dante Parker as assistant football coaches set at $4,159 each. Nikki King as girls varsity soccer assistant coach, salary set at $3,421. Approval of Aaron Askin as a volunteer middle school girls soccer coach. Approval of the following band volunteers, Sam Ellenberger, Aaron Duggar, Taylor Grimm, and Daniel Baresschak. All clearances are on file, and that will be pending Act 168 responses. And under non-athletics, we have the approval of Jessica Fassano as woodwind instructor for the marching band, a salary of $1,357. Sarah Thompson as brass instructor at a supplemental salary of $1,339. And approval of Carolyn Ann McCloy as percussion and drum line instructor at a salary of $1,339. Clearances are on file, and again, pending approval of 168 favorable responses.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. School security?
It is recommended that the board approve Kyle Swinton, Ken Sander, Sr., as school security on an as-needed basis for the 2015-16 school year. Clearances are on file. And everyone we hire, by the way, I'm going to quit saying this, every time we hire somebody, we have to send out a form to previous employers, but we don't do that until after the hiring has occurred, and that's Act 168, and that deals with the former employer having any knowledge of this individual being terminated for any kind of child sexual abuse, pornography, those kinds of things. So I've been saying that every time we hire somebody, but let's just make that an assumption. It's going to be standard operating procedure moving forward.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Recommendation of employment?
I'm going to change this motion just a little bit here. It's recommended that the board approve the following recommendations pending favorable Act 168 response. Salaries will be according to the agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association. High school foreign language teacher would be Joanna Harrington at Step M2, and middle school math teacher Cindy Gallagher also at Step M2. It's also recommended that the board employ Dr. Stacy Snyder as school psychologist and director of pupil services at a salary of $78,000, and Dr. Snyder will be added to the Act 93 agreement. That position will be added there and not to the Southmoreland Education Association agreement.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Recommendation of employment?
I'm going to change this motion just a little bit here. It's recommended that the board approve the following recommendations pending favorable Act 168 response. Salaries will be according to the agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association. High school foreign language teacher would be Joanna Harrington at Step M2, and middle school math teacher Cindy Gallagher also at Step M2. It's also recommended that the board employ Dr. Stacy Snyder as school psychologist and director of pupil services at a salary of $78,000, and Dr. Snyder will be added to the Act 93 agreement. That position will be added there and not to the Southmoreland Education Association agreement.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Recommendation of employment?
I'm going to change this motion just a little bit here. It's recommended that the board approve the following recommendations pending favorable Act 168 response. Salaries will be according to the agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association. High school foreign language teacher would be Joanna Harrington at Step M2, and middle school math teacher Cindy Gallagher also at Step M2. It's also recommended that the board employ Dr. Stacy Snyder as school psychologist and director of pupil services at a salary of $78,000, and Dr. Snyder will be added to the Act 93 agreement. That position will be added there and not to the Southmoreland Education Association agreement.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Board report, CWCTC report?
We did not have a July meeting. Our August meeting was last night. We approved free policies on purchases, budgeted job-related expenses, and tobacco use, which includes vapor cigarettes. That was important that they get that in there for this year. We appointed a voting delegate for the PSBA conference. Approved TMR to perform emergency repairs to the automotive canopy. You guys remember Johnson Controls redid the whole roof out there, and that was almost a million square feet. This canopy is 1,800, and that wasn't considered a roof, so they didn't do anything with that since there was no living space underneath it. But it is a concrete structure that looks like a roof, so the lifespan on that, the company that came in and inspected it, was two years left of it. So the only thing we discussed last night was to spend $3,500 to do emergency repairs to get them through the rest of the year, because automotive students use that, you know, when the weather's nice, to pull the vehicles out there to repair it. So sort of like something to look at. You know, that wasn't, we'd think that would be done with the roof, but you know, that's not part of the scope of the work. You know, if somebody would have known about that ahead of time, we probably would have gotten that done from Johnson Controls. that ahead of time, we probably would have gotten that done from Johnson Controls. So we discussed that for a while. Had a discussion about JOC members, board members attending the ACT Conference. That's the National Conference for Tech Education. We talked about limiting board members to go. Anyway, we had the solicitor draft a motion that a board member must attend 75% of the meetings to be able to attend that national conference, and everybody was in agreement with that. We have some people going to meet those conferences that never show up to the JOC meetings, so it sort of defeats the purpose of them going. There's nothing in our rules to keep them from going, so. Gave everybody attendance and enrollment figures. If you look at their enrollment sheet, you'll see that Southmoreland enrollment's down 29% from last year. The administrators from CWCTC want to come into the middle school and talk to the students about that. They feel that speaking to the ninth grade students is a little too late to give them the bulk of their head, so that was their way to solve the problem. Obviously, they want to get more students when you're out there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. WIE, your report?
We also have no meeting in July, but we did get a new director, Dr. Conway, and I did get to meet with him. He's a very nice gentleman. Looking forward to working with him.
Thank you. PSBA liaison report?
Superintendent Shomper reports that the school leadership conference is going to be held October 13th through the 16th. That runs, well, actually Tuesday would be the delegate assembly where Mr. Benz and I will be attending. And then the rest of the week would be workshops and featured speakers. There is also a early bird special. If anybody is interested in attending, the district would get 10% discount if you would book by August 28th. So anybody else is interested in going or attending the conference even for a day or two, contact Peggy, and I'm sure she can take care of the reservations for you. So I'll be reporting more in detail on the conference next month, so that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
I have a couple of walk-on motions. The first one is it is recommended that the board employ Walter Mizwa as the working supervisor of buildings and grounds at a salary of $65,000.
Need a motion, please? Secondly, Mr. Colero, second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Questions of the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
No. Motion passes seven to two.
Next item I have is it's recommended that the board approve an articulation agreement with St. Vincent College for the purpose of hosting student teachers. No cost to the district then.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Secondly, Mr. Colero, questions? Questions of the audience? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
The next item I have is a resolution concerning a personnel matter. Be hereby resolved that the school board approves the settlement of the personnel matter at Southmoreland School District, ED 2014-15, number 103, per the terms of the settlement agreement, which does not require the expenditure of funds by the district for back pay.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Secondly, Mr. Beistall, questions? Questions of the audience? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
And just some informational items for you. We're obviously getting geared up for the start of school. Kindergarten orientation has been completed. In addition to the faculty, many others stepped forward to make this event successful, and I believe I included a memo from Mr. Colera in your packet to thank those individuals. The other buildings have also been busy preparing for the return of students. Band camp has finished. Fall sports camps have begun. Our teachers are officially back on Tuesday, August 25th, but many of them have been in for a number of days working in their classrooms, and the students will be back on August 31st. This year, the Commonwealth has mandated a new teacher evaluation system based on the work and research of Charlotte Danielson, and will be implementing that at Southmoreland for the first time this school year. So administrators have been busy attending trainings and designing local tools to implement the process. This past year, Southmoreland underwent a federal programs monitoring process. That happens periodically, and I'm pleased to report that we received a letter this week telling us that our programs are in total compliance with all regulations, both programmatically and fiscally. So that was good news for us. And finally, as you learned, when Peggy called you all on Monday, there was a sprinkler malfunction in the SES freezer, and that caused a minor flood in the cooler and the freezer and the office area. There was a pretty significant loss of food that was in storage in that freezer. $4,823.94 worth of food was destroyed. We're still waiting to learn the extent of the damage to the freezer itself, as well as the cost to replace the malfunctioning sprinkler. I just wanted to recognize our maintenance department. They were called out at 1:30 a.m. Sunday morning, so I know Lee and Keith and Roy were there taking care of that into the wee hours of the morning. I was a little groggy when Lee called me at 2:30. Had to let me know what was going on, so thanks to these guys. Lee, can you just explain a little bit about what happened there?
In the freezer and in the cooler, there's a, what they call a dry sprinkler head. It protrudes down in, so there really isn't any water at the head point, but there's a device that runs up about 16 inches away from the freezing temperature, and that's where the water's held. For some reason, the device inside that tube broke, and it's designed to break when there's a fire, but this one's just malfunctioned. Now, we also have one in the cooler, and we're going to replace that at the same time. Once the system's down, we don't want to take a chance with either one of those. Once the sprinkler went off, where the water just came out full force, defrosted everything, wet everything down, and ran, that was actually pretty dirty water. Ran through the entire kitchen. It was just cleaned two days before that, so we re-cleaned the entire kitchen. It was the custodial staff pitched in, and Mr. Alfred Stoner also came in that night. We needed help moving the heavy boxes because it was frozen food. So we did get it under control and gave the freezer a very good cleaning, and cleaned the cooler also. Now we're waiting for the fire protection company to custom-make these two pieces and install those.
So Mr. Morell is currently fighting with the insurance company over the deductible. We're calling it an equipment malfunction, which has a $2,500 deductible, and that's what we hope the agreement will be, as opposed to a property claim like we have a football field, where a deductible is 10 times that, $25,000. So Jim and Lee have been working with the insurance company to make that happen, and again, Don Furio from our insurance broker goes to bat for us, and he does what he can with school claims. Thanks, Lee. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
I would request that the president invite a resolution for a complete settlement of tax assessment litigation with Sears Holdings Corporation versus Westmoreland County Board of Assessment Appeals, Westmoreland number 111242006, tax map number 47-14-00-154, and subsequent owner. Whereas Southmoreland School Board had approved settlement of the above tax assessment appeal by resolution on May 14, 2015, and East Tynecent Township had approved the same by resolution dated May 21, 2015, which are hereby incorporated by reference, and both of those were dependent upon Westmoreland County Commissioners also consenting to settlement. Whereas while negotiations were proceeding, the above case became the subject of an administrative order of court dismissing the appeal, which at the time was unknown to the parties, and which dismissal, in the opinion of this solicitor, was improperly entered as part of a mass administrative dismissal of cases by the court. And the attorney for the owner has noticed the presentation of a motion to reinstate the above statutory appeal and has given written assurance of intending to proceed with the same terms of the settlement as stated in this school board's resolution of May 14, 2015, contingent upon reinstatement, and to settle any appeal by the new owner who leases to Sears Holdings Corp., which would affect tax year 2016 for the same assessment of $958,500 as for 2015. Whereas it is desired the school board to avoid unnecessary litigation and to secure the benefits of the certainty of the terms of the settlement as set forth in the May 14, 2015 resolution, it is hereby resolved that the solicitor is authorized and directed to consent to and support the motion for reinstatement, and to stipulate to and take all necessary steps to complete the settlement for years 2007 through 2015, as previously[1714.24]